Good evening and welcome to the October 14, 2024 City Council meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Councilman Kalmick, could you please lead us in the flag?
Please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could you please take roll?
Councilmember Kalmick?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Steele?
Here.
Mayor Protem Landau?
Here.
And Mayor Sustarsak?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We have no presentations recognitions tonight, so we'll move on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and the entire city council, not to any individual, member of the staff, or the audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Speaker cards are available at the clerk's desk for those wishing to sign up to address the council, although the submission of a speaker card is not required in order to address the council. No speaker cards tonight? No? Okay. Then is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up and speak? Okay, come on up.
The time is there, okay. I'm Ken Sye from College Park West. I've addressed you before, nice to meet everybody again, and thanks for this opportunity to speak to you. Again, I'm going to try here with a limited five minutes to discuss the complex projects that I've sent to the Haines. It's really tough, I hope there is, as I've been asking for and other people have been asking for, much more, we both robust opportunity for public comment and input opportunities for these issues. Again, I've referenced the two projects from outside Seal Beach attempting to get approval to access Seal Beach property and/or infrastructure, particularly water, the Lamson project and the Haines pipeline project. I think there are extensive real potential negative impacts and even harm from these projects, and the benefits really, I think, are minimal. In fact, I haven't really heard any benefits from Seal Beach, to Seal Beach any. Tragedy to me is that both of these projects can be completed without having to come into our area or use our infrastructure. There are alternative alignments and routes they can use. I'm not saying the project should be completed, that's another whole story, but if they're going to be completed, they don't have to come here. And I look forward to the opportunity to explaining my views of these alternative routes and alignments if we ever get to that point. So, back to the question, what benefits does Seal Beach get from these projects? You know, I know we need to be good neighbors. There's community cooperation and regional projects, but that doesn't mean that we necessarily need to put up with the negative implications of these projects when these seem to outweigh the benefits. We seem, you know, other cities seem to, and entities seem to be able to say no. I don't know why our little city can't just say no sometimes. Regarding the Haines project, I wonder what Long Beach would do if Seal Beach proposed a project to them that would go through one of their preserves and impact one of their existential bridges for one of their neighborhoods. I don't think they would be too happy about it. And, you know, also for the Haines project, one of the reasons it's going through our bridge is because Caltrans told the planners they can't use the 22 bridge, for whatever reason. And, you know, Caltrans can say no, other cities can say no, we can say no too, I think. I know it's not that simple, but, you know, I only have five minutes. Less than that now. So, anyway, I don't think the point is really, you know, what do we get out of things? That's pretty selfish, but I'm not really sure what anybody can tell me about the Lamson project, what Seal Beach gets in a benefit from that. They want to attach to our aging and impacted water system. When we're looking at tax hikes and increased rates for water and sewer services, how can we even think about that right now? Our city's in no shape to really even consider that. And again, I stress to you, I think they have other routes they could use. It's easiest and cheapest for them to come through Seal Beach, same through Long Beach with the Haines project, and I'd be happy to talk to anybody else and expand upon my opinion about this. The Lamson project also increases risk of flooding and problems with water drainage and the surface water that College Park East has had for years. As far as the Haines project, many negatives, damage to our preserve, the bridge I've mentioned. The only benefit I can see there is a vague mention of some type of connection to the Seal Beach, to that pipeline for us. You know, it's all very, nothing's in the documents I can see, and I've been spending way too much time on those thousand-page documents. And where is the plan for that? Where is the connection? How will it work? What will construction costs be on our side to hook that up? And is it worth destroying our grove, whatever mitigation that is going to all grow back someday, to try to get some, you know, to get that connection that could help us and in fact could harm us developing a more integrated project for-
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
-surface water control and drainage and stormwater and even flooding that I've mentioned before, that maybe we should take a look at and not be rushed or bullied into anything. So, I guess the point becomes whether it's worth the damage and the negative impacts done for these projects. And remember that alternatives are available to these projects. I'd love to talk more about all that, so no need to enter Seal Beach or utilize-
Your time has expired.
...already aging and impacted infrastructure. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in oral communications? Okay, John?
Oh, thank you. Put it up there, so we can leave it here.
I guess one thing I'd just say for the College Park East thing that he was just talking about is, I think we could absorb them into Seal Beach down the line. Yeah. I just came up to pay respect to the indigenous people of this land. I know that we built on parts that we found like gravesyards before, and I hope those spirits can rest. When I was a kid, which wasn't even that long ago, it was like the whole Columbus Day and the pilgrims and all that. And what I'm trying to do is synergize the two cultures, which has been done before by the Native American Church with peyote and Christianity, and Maria Sabina, who's in Mexico, with the Mazatzek people and Catholicism. And further down in Southern America, there's the Santo Dime Church. It has places all over the world though now, and they use the brew ayahuasca. So, that's what I envision as the future, but I think that if you get down to it, it's Jesus is in the manger, he bleeds the blue water, he's circumcised. Sorry for always bringing that up, it's weird, but it's true. And that's how I envision peace. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's my best effort so far. One thing I do think, when it comes to the whole suicide thing, like on a local scale, I think that we need the peace pipe to try to do like a weapon exchange sort of thing. I would use either cannabis or NNDMT, because once you got all the big vehicles around and all that, it's, they still have a weapon, like there's nothing you can do, so it's like you have to exchange it somehow. Anyways, that's just a thought. No escape plan. I am who I am. Speak truth to wash my hands. Behold bravery to promised land. The world is here for your love. I am welcome, I am of. The alienist remembers when the native forgets. The word unlocks the world's prison of not yet. Silence has no wings. Flying when voice sings. Light, as only light can be. You understand me.
Okay, anyone else would like to speak? No? Okay, seeing none, I will close oral communications. Move on to approval of the agenda and waiver of the full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the city council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull an item from the consent calendar? No? Seeing none? Okay. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Three supplemental communications were received after the posting of the agenda. They have been distributed to the city council and made available to the public.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to get a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please vote on your iPads. Or not? No? Roll call vote?
Yeah, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Steele, how do you vote?
Yea.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Sustarsak, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the city attorney report. City Attorney Gurelli, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session this afternoon to discuss the two items on the posted agenda. All five council members were present, and no reportable action was taken tonight. Thank you.
Okay. And city manager report, acting city manager, Gaia Goskin, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few updates for you. Last week, I had the good fortune of touring the OC sanitation facilities in Found Valley to learn more about what they do, and all the upcoming projects they have. I know, Mayor, you have been involved with the OC San for some time now, so it's a great institution if you ever get the chance to tour the facility, take that opportunity. We also attended the State of the District earlier this week, Los Alamos Unified School District, where Superintendent Dr. Pulver gave a very inspiring and passionate presentation to talk about the success of his students as well as his teachers, with the campaign theme being be extraordinary. And I thought it was a really great event, as it always is every year, and so that was really fun. And today, we hosted our staff development day at the tennis and pickleball center. We had some great building activities, we all had a great time, and had a lot of professional development. We had a speaker from our JPIA, Joint Powers Insurance Authority, to talk about navigating change, and I think we learned a whole lot and got to network and, you know, co-mingle with across departments, and I thought that was a really great opportunity. So, thank you again from the council for allowing us to take that opportunity and grow from that experience every year, so thank you. And then lastly, and this is for everybody, the pumpkins are currently on display in City Hall. If you haven't seen them, I would go and check those out. They're on the first floor, right next to the city clerk's office, and there is voting that is going on. Our departments really get into it every year, and you'll notice when you view them how impassioned, how passionate we are about Halloween, and please join us on the 31st for our trunk or treat. So, with that, Mayor, that's it.
Okay, and we'll move on to council comments. Councilman-
Steele. Nathan Steele.
Councilman Steele, do you have comments?
That's okay. My memory is failing me too, so. I was not here at the last city council meeting, I was on a short vacation up in the New England area to look at the colors. The colors failed me. They had not had a hard freeze yet, so it was mostly green, but it was a great cruise, and so I enjoyed that, and thank you for allowing my absence on one of the meetings. The big deal in my last couple of weeks is I attended the JPIA Risk Management Conference in the desert, Palm Desert, and I learned a lot about, from a municipal perspective, what risk is, what it looks like. I expected to see an update on water, and I got an update on water as it relates to the risk profile of a city, and so it's kind of like a step into a direction I was unfamiliar with before. But it was a great, great conference, and I attended quite a few sessions that were quite interesting and illuminating, at least for my learning curve here, so that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Kalmick, do you have anything to report?
Yes, thank you. I attended OCAB, the Orange County Council of Governments, and also the Orange County Fire Authority Board meeting, and that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank our police department for hosting Coffee with the Cop event at the Pete's Coffee in the shops at Rossmore. We had about 15 residents with, from various parts of my district. People came and went, and it was great to see everyone who stopped by. I attended the Measure GG presentation in our new community room at the tennis center last Wednesday night. It was a smaller gathering, but it provided a great opportunity to engage with a few concerned residents and discuss the important issues. I had the privilege of joining the Breast Cancer Awareness Beach Walk organized by the Pink Journey Foundation. We walked from the first street to the pier, and they raised $10,000. It was an incredible effort led by one of the residents in College Park West, and it was the first time this event raised funds for such an important cause. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Landau, do you have a report?
I would also like to thank the police department, Chief Henderson, for Coffee with the Cop. This was at Humble Maker. I'd also like to thank Tony and Deanna, I think I'm saying that right, the owners of Humble Maker. They graciously came back and opened up Humble Maker so we could do Coffee with the Cop. I'd also like to thank Captain Nicholas and Yosa, Captain Ezra was there, Sergeant Gray, and our community policing team as well. It was a great event, thank you for coming, John, and that is it.
Okay, thank you. I attended a chamber meeting with our new Chamber of Commerce co-presidents, Darren and Richie. I attended a chamber breakfast meeting, a regional military affairs committee meeting, a community meeting for Measure GG. I attended a Los Alamos Planning Commission meeting, an Orange County Sanitation Operations Committee meeting, and I attended the Republic Services rodeo. I went down to Republic Services in Huntington Beach, and they have a, I think it's an annual event where the buses, I've been to one of those too, but this is, the trash trucks drive around and they try to use skill. It's not so much speed, but they try to maneuver, parallel park close, maneuver between small cones, big cones, back into small spaces, do all kinds of things, and they get points depending on how close they are. And so, this, they have residential drivers, they have ones, let's see, I'm trying to remember, roll-off, it seems like it's a open kind of truck thing that collects, and then a commercial one, so they're divided, and the top winner wins like $1,000, and then $500 and $250, something like that. So, it was fun, they had bales of hay to sit down on and watch all this go on, and I want to thank Debbie Killie for inviting me and for her boss and a lady named Angie who's with HR who explained a lot of this stuff to me and had a fun time and learned about all that they go through to be very careful. They understand that in Seal Beach, they have to maneuver through the alleys, and that takes a lot of careful driving. So, anyway, it was fun and something fun and different to do, so that's all for me tonight. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items polled by council members. We have nothing polled, so I just need a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar tonight.
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, and we'll try voting on our iPads, or? No, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Steele, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Sustarsak, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to our public hearing. This is Zone Text Amendment 24-02, amending portions of Title 11 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code pertaining to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And here we have, hi.
Hi, good evening, City Councilwoman Mayor. Item F tonight is for zoning text amendment 24-02. Tonight's zoning text amendment will focus on cleanups and updates to ensure compliance with state legislation. And a couple items we're going to talk about will be the recommendations from HCD and some new state bills. Last year, the city council adopted ordinance number 1706, and as mandated, the ordinance was submitted to HCD for reviews and comments. On August 20th of this year, the city received comments and a list of modifications. First, SB 477, which reorganized existing ADU statutes into one chapter and essentially relabeling the state code sections for ADUs. The remaining comments and recommendations were language modifications to match state legislation, to remain in good standing with the state. Language updates include clarifying that multifamily dwelling properties would be allowed to create at least one unit from non-habitable space and a maximum of two detached ADUs. That a certificate of occupancy shall not be issued for an accessory dwelling unit before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the primary dwelling. Other clarifying language includes that the city shall approve or deny an ADU application within 60 days of submittal, and that parking may be provided as a tandem parking on a SB 477 went into effect on March 25, 2024. It relocated JADUs and ADU sections of the government code. These changes were organizational in nature, and the content of the sections did not change. Any reference of the previous sections have been removed and updated with the appropriate government code section. Previous legislation permitted local agencies to add owner-occupant restrictions on an ADU after January 1 of the upcoming year. AB 976 prohibits the city from imposing an owner-occupancy requirement. Staff remove this requirement from the zoning text language as mandated. Additionally, AB 976 changed the language of rental terms from terms longer than 30 days to 30 days or longer. The language was modified to match state law. All updates in this ordinance were done with the objective to have the municipal code match the state code as required by state law, and therefore, staff recommends approval of this ordinance. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any comments or questions.
I have a question. Do you have a question?
We want to do public comments first, are we doing that now?
Do you want to take public comments first?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, we'll open up the public hearing for public comment. Anyone here for public comments on the zone text amendment? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment now. Did you want to go?
I have a question, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
No.
Question about the rental terms and things like that. Are people who add an ADU to their home, are they restricted on using it as a short-term rental Airbnb verbo sort of thing, or does that rental restriction prohibit them? I thought I heard you say a minimum of three days?
30 days.
Minimum of 30 days, so can it be an SDR? Can it be a short-term rental?
I can answer that, Councilmember Steele. No, an ADU nor a JADU can be a short-term rental, and that language is also covered in our short-term rental ordinance.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So, you know, in looking at this, you know, we're unique to other cities outside of Seal Beach, but within Seal Beach, we're also unique. I mean, we cannot do a one-size-fits-all. You know, the Hill is different from leisure world, College Park East, College Park West, and I think there's still some lingering questions that probably need to be answered before, in my opinion, before we approve this. So, if I were to build an ADU, JADU, are the property taxes reassessed? I mean, is that an automatic?
Yes, property taxes are reassessed. Typically, it's just on the structural or improvement value of the property, not on the land itself, very similar to if you added on a room to your house, your structural value would be reassessed by the assessor, the county assessor.
And now, because Sacramento also passed something where we could, if I build an ADU, I can sell it, right?
Under certain circumstances. The ADU needs to be constructed by a nonprofit, so not an individual. However, there are provisions that allow for condominiumization. Tricia, do you want to speak to that at all?
Yes, like Alexa had mentioned, there are certain circumstances where nonprofits would be allowed to do it, but it's not an individual homeowner that would be allowed to.
Okay, I guess I was under the impression that it didn't need to be a nonprofit, it could be anybody that if I wanted to sell off part of my property- It could be anybody that if I wanted to sell off part of my property, I could do that.
There's also a separate state bill, SB 9, that does allow a property owner to do what's called an urban lot split and subdivide their lot. And in that case, they'd be able to build units on one lot, build units on the other lot, and then sell off a unit on that other lot. So it would be an SB 9. If that was what somebody was planning to do, they'd likely pursue the development under SB 9.
So they don't have to be a nonprofit?
Under, under.
That's under SB 9?
I, I am looking at the, at the government code specific to, to this issue. And what it says is that in addition to the requirement that a local agency allows separate sale or conveyance of an accessory dwelling unit pursuant to the section that talks about being a nonprofit, a local agency may also adopt a local ordinance to allow the separate conveyance. That is not included or proposed in our ordinance today.
Okay, thank you. And upon construction, are, is the post office going to reassign addresses? I mean, is it going to be recognized?
Yes, yes, it is. It goes, it goes through a process of addressing specifically for public safety purposes so that the fire department or something like that can reach it, yes.
Thank you. And have we budgeted how much proposed revenue we would generate from the addition of all these ADUs and JADUs?
Specific to our department, no, we have not, simply because we have not seen a lot of ADU development, you know, on, on a scale that would make a deep impact to our incoming revenues for property tax. Our property tax assessment is 15 cents on the dollar. So the addition of the limited number of ADUs that we've experienced so far is negligible at, at best. If we were to, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
If we were to see a ramp up in, in this type of activity, then we would absolutely be looking at that with the finance department in order to budget for those increases.
Okay, so since Sacramento is making it easier, do you foresee that more people will take this path and, you know, utilize their property and?
It's hard to speculate. I, I mean, it's been relatively easy to build an ADU for a little while now and it's still not something that has become particularly widespread or popular within our community. Some of that has to do with, as you say, you know, our, our existing neighborhoods. A lot of them don't necessarily lend themselves to that. It's, it's just not a trend that, that we're noticing in our applications at the moment. We do see them, but it's few and far between. I think last year there were three.
Okay, thank you. And, um, sorry, a couple more questions. So in, in building the ADUs and JADUs, am I reading that right? That we don't have to accommodate additional parking? Is that just because it's an ADU or does it have to be low income?
It's just because it's an ADU. It does not have to be income restricted.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about policing who's renting to who and if it's low income, moderate income, it's just ADU, okay? Okay, so normally when there is construction, new construction remodels, school taxes have to be paid, correct? Is that before final sign-off? Do we still, is, is that still a requirement?
Impact fees for ADUs are a little bit different than if you were to build a, a standard home. An ADU that is under 750 square feet does not have to pay impact fees. If they are above 750 square feet, then the share that they need to pay for an impact fee, and that would be true of our traffic impact fee or our park impact fee, anything like that, is proportional to the size of the home. So it's actually a calculation that's done based on the, the primary unit. So the single-family home, if it is, let's say, 2,000 square feet and they built a 1,000 square foot ADU, then their impact would be 50%, their impact fee would be 50% of the standard impact fee that would be applied to another single-family home.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and if it's under 750 square feet, does that mean they don't, did I read that right? That they don't have to, to get their own utilities? Um, I mean, that was a little confusing.
For utilities, and I can ask Director Lee to speak to this if I get off base here, but for, for our water and sewer connections here in the city, we do not implement a, a new meter for a second unit of any kind. If it's a multifamily property, they typically have one meter. It would be the same thing for an ADU. It continues to be a one-meter situation. In terms of electricity or something like that, that, that we're not necessarily an approving agency for, they can have their own power. And I think that's somewhat common. But in terms of the utilities that we provide, it remains basically what, what is there now for the primary unit and extends off of that.
So no additional water and sewer hookups?
Correct.
Okay. And then if somebody were to take advantage of having all four, so your primary, your ADUs, your JADUs, does that owner now become like a business owner? Do they have to get permits? Do they have to, you know, declare revenue? Is it taxable?
In terms of a business license, yes, they're renting out units, so they should have a business license for those purposes to the extent that they're, I guess, renting them to the general public. If it's, if it's an extended family situation, I think that would probably be different. Well, actually, I don't know. I defer to Barb on that. But yes, generally speaking, if you are renting units, you need to have a business license to operate simply as a landlord.
Yes, Director Smidall is correct. You would be a property manager, so you would need a business license.
And then is that all that, that rental revenue, is that taxable?
No, that, the rental revenue would be go to the state and their federal taxes, but wouldn't come to the city.
Okay, thank you. I'm almost done. Okay, and with new construction in Old Town, is FEMA's requirement now, we have to have it raised three feet since we're below sea level or at sea level? Is that a FEMA requirement that new construction is raised three feet?
We have seen that requirement placed on new construction by the Coastal Commission. I don't know that it's necessarily a FEMA requirement. Sean?
I'll speak to that. It's, so there, those restrictions are, are placed by the Coastal Commission. And however, they, they do use FEMA maps. It's not directly from FEMA themselves. They do use FEMA maps. And so it's essentially where they see areas of concern within Old Town. So it's not a blanket everywhere in Old Town. It's just where certain areas are more prone to flooding.
So if, if an ADU falls within that zone, does that new ADU need to be compliant with FEMA?
That, so that would go, right now, that's under, it's a review done with Coastal Commission and they do that assessment themselves. So we, we wouldn't know when the application comes in, whether or not we advise them to contact the Coastal Commission, so that they may want to assess from them whether or not they need to do this adjustment. But then that assessment's actually done by the Coastal Commission.
Okay, thank you. And my, my other concern is also evacuation plans. So, um, you know, the Hill is definitely different than Old Town, you know? Having worked with PD and, and doing the tsunami walkouts, you know? That's my concern that if, you know, we get to this point where we're adding ADUs and additional dwellings, that, that we're going to have an issue with, you know, safety and evacuation plan, I mean, or fire. Have we?
Our evacuation plan remains in place and would be the case at this point regardless of how many units we have in Old Town or, or the Hill. The, the evacuation plan that was designed by PD is meant to accommodate as, you know, the maximum number of people. However, I understand your point that if, you know, we're, we're looking at a sizable increase, that, you know, that's something to consider. We do regularly update a variety of different safety plans. We have a, a safety element within the, within the general plan that we're in the process of updating. And I know that Sergeant Gray has another program that he is updating right now related to public safety and disasters, those types of things. But again, at the moment, we don't see a rapid increase in the number of units due to ADU legislation. So I just don't think we're necessarily at a place where a conversation like that is, is ripe.
Okay. And one last thing, um, I think it was page 68 of the staff report regarding Leisure World. I'm just concerned, it doesn't seem like Leisure World is excluded. So I think I read that a carport or covered parking can be converted to an ADU. So what, what happens with Leisure World?
Leisure World is, is just a very interesting case because the governance structure, the ownership structure, it's actually six or seven properties total. And these ADU standards are per property and within the property, there's the mutuals and then the overall governing Golden Rain Foundation. And just logistically, from that perspective, ADUs are not something that's going to happen in, in Leisure World.
Well, is it, are they precluded from not building in Leisure World? I mean, the way I read it is that they could take a carport and turn it into an ADU.
Correct, so that you're allowed to take, with multifamily structure, you're allowed to take a non-habitable space such as garage area and convert it to ADU. That is correct.
So neither state law nor the ordinance precludes the development of an ADU within Leisure World. In fact, state law specifically says that a court can enforce a covenant that would have the effect of precluding an ADU. So like a, a set of CCNRs that say no ADUs, that's not enforceable under state law. I will say Leisure World has an interesting ownership structure, so I don't know how the process would go, actually go with approving them within Leisure World because of what Sean said with, you know, the, the lots, the, the property is not owned individually by the homeowner.
So correct, well, all I was trying to, in theory, yes, you could build ADUs in Leisure World. But given the ownership structure, that there's thousands of owners per one property, coming to an agreement to build that ADU in, in a single structure is going to be incredibly difficult.
But it's possible.
It's, it's theoretically legal, yes.
Okay.
In Leisure World, we don't own real estate. We're shareholders. We're not real estate owners. And I know that the state laws that pertain to these types of properties, the 55-plus properties, I think were precluded by that, if, if that's what I understood you to say. We're precluded from developing an ADU in?
We're not, these laws don't specifically address Leisure World, the type of co-op shareholder arrangement in Leisure World. I think Sean and I are both saying that the ownership structure, because individual residents don't own the real estate, they couldn't just come in and get a building permit without the approval of the property owners. And that, my understanding of the property ownership is that it's going to require, require an approval of the shareholders for each co-op to approve that.
Which would be probably an insurmountable odd right there.
So if this, what is the alternative if this is not approved? What happens?
If they, it's state law, so it would have to be processed anyways.
So we have to approve it?
Yes.
I have no choice.
The, the letter that HCD sent to us stated that if we refuse to approve it, it would be referred to the Attorney General.
But they also said that if we didn't, we'd have to give our reasons why.
That's correct.
If you weren't going to approve it tonight to make the ADU, the city's ADU ordinance consistent with state law, I think that HCD would say, we recommend that you repeal your entire ADU ordinance and rely instead on state law. Differ back to what the government code says about what you must approve. Because the statute technically says that a city may adopt an ADU ordinance. And when you do, it has to meet all of these requirements. So if we kept an ordinance on the books that didn't meet all the requirements of state law, HCD would, could refer us to the Attorney General. And we would not be able to enforce that ordinance to deny an ADU.
And again, what's being proposed tonight is fairly limited in scope. We do have an ADU ordinance. The bulk of it is already codified into our municipal code. This is a number of administrative edits based on changes to the government code where they house the ADU legislation, plus another four things that Patricia went over, such as the tandem parking. They're fairly limited in scope in terms of what we're allowing in addition by tonight's action.
And by keeping an ADU ordinance on the books, it ensures that in those areas where the city can have influence, it is able to make that choice to protect local control.
Okay, that's my questions for right now.
I had one question. On the, one of the residents mentioned that the state statute requires minimum rear yard, rear yard and side yard setback for four feet for the ADU. Is that part of our code?
Yes, that's currently in our code unless the setback is already less than. For the ADUs though, it's four feet.
Look, so something's already there.
That's been in place for years, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Did you, can I go ahead, Lisa, are you? No, go ahead, go ahead. Um, I had a, a couple just sort of trying to get my hand around what, what all the new changes. So you have, I, I asked a question regarding parking, just because I was seeing if you have four now, an attached ADU, an attached JADU, and then you can have two more ADUs?
One more, so.
One more ADU.
One ADU and one.
Including the home, okay.
Right, yeah, so a total of four units, including the home.
So there, there is a change though, that we have, we have said that one has to be owner occupied, but at that point now, we can't say that. So it used to be you had to have someone there that sort of, but so technically you could have one, two, three, four, somebody could have four rentals in one without anyone
That's correct.
having to be present. It could just be turned into a cluster of rentals. And as far as the parking's concerned, my question was, if you had the, a JADU in the garage, then that wouldn't be avail, that's technically available for the main dwellings' parking, but if you have an ADU in there, then the driveway becomes parking or some places don't have driveways.
Right, I mean, if you have, if you have a single family with a detached garage and you park your two cars in there, there's no cars on the street. If you convert that garage to an ADU, the two cars from the house, they're on the street, plus the people that move in to the ADU that have two cars, they're on the street. So you added four cars to the street.
To the street, yeah. I, I was trying to figure, okay, so tandem means one's in the garage and one's in the driveway. If you're converting them to tandem, I mean, if you're doing a pre-existing reconfiguration of a pre-existing house, you, you would have to do that.
Yeah, it would, it would just depend on the circumstance. The, the law is simply saying that tandem parking is allowed in, in terms of, you know, kind of the world of, of planning, tandem parking has been controversial at times because people, you know, think that it's not as workable. And it's not as workable. So yeah, this, that was a code clarification that was provided through state legislation.
So if there's an, if there's a junior ADU in the garage, then the, the answer to my question was, you don't have to provide any parking?
Right, if you're converting the space of, of the garage to a living unit, you do not need to replace that parking.
Or any, but for any, so all, all of them don't have to have parking, they'll be on the street. Yeah, I've had issues in the past where it's already, it's already without the ADUs. It's already sometimes, you know, an impact on the street if you have multiple rentals. Okay, let me see. I have some, it's just they're sort of, I'm going to have to look for them. Okay, and then, and it was, Lisa asked some of these questions. Water and service, sewer services provided by that of the primary dweller, not a separate set of services unless the local water and sewer service provider requires a new separate utility. So for a separate ADU, a utility connection directly between the ADU and the utility may be required? That depends on the agency or? That depends on the agency, or?
I think that section of the law, yes, is allowing some decisions to be made by the agency. I mean, the fact that we don't practice that, that we have one connection for our multifamily properties doesn't mean that we would have to do that forever. It's just how we do things at the moment.
Mayor Sestres, so based on our current practices and requirements, we do not require a separate service at this time.
Okay. Right now, more than likely, you have one ADU with a property. If you had three, you know, it would get a little more complicated. But basically, they'd have to work it out among, well, with an owner, I can see working it out with three, but it gets a little more complicated if you have, say, four rentals or something, but.
Truthfully, we see it in our existing small multifamily properties that exist now, especially here in Old Town. But, you know, I think how that typically works out is, you know, when you rent, when you rent an apartment, often sewer and water is just a part of your rent. Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. There was something else. Okay. And I had also a question about the sale, because I had read that as a city council could approve something that says you could sell them. And that gets, that gets to be, I think, super complicated, too. But that won't be involved. Okay. I think most, between, most of my questions have been answered. So thank you.
Just two more, sorry. It's, and if I didn't catch it, I'm sorry. Is there some sort of requirement that the ADU is proportionate to the neighborhood? So like the Hill or College Park East, College Park West, where we have a little bit more land? Is there a requirement that?
There's not a requirement for proportionality. The maximum size of an ADU is 1,200 square feet, and the maximum size of a JADU, that's a conversion of interior space, is 500 square feet. So typically, that wouldn't necessarily be out of character for our neighborhoods. Again, just sort of depending on what the lot could accommodate, which varies a little bit by neighborhood. But no, we don't change the maximum size of the ADU based on the neighborhood. It is uniform within our code.
So nobody can exceed 1,200 square feet?
That's right.
Okay. I just have one more comment. I mean, this, you know, with all the density, you know, the everything, the legislation that Sacramento is passing down to us, you know, I'm just concerned because we have aging infrastructure. I mean, those are some of our issues. It's why we needed to increase water sewer rates is to, you know, rectify these issues. And I just feel like, until those are fixed, you know, traffic, you know, density issues, you know, safety, you know, I just feel like those are, you know, relevant issues. We add more people, until we've fixed the things that need to be fixed, I think it's an issue. It's just a comment, not a question.
I am. The question before us right now is, we already have an ADU ordinance on the books, correct?
Yes.
So this isn't whether we have ADUs in Old Town or on the Hill or in Leisure World or not. The question is, is the current iteration of our ADU law needs to be upgraded or updated to comply or align with state language, correct?
That's correct.
And just an off-the-wall question, if we did not pass these upgrades here, and we just left it as is, what happens?
Well, HCD is already aware that we are updating ordinance or proposing to update our ordinance. When we received the letter in August from them, that was my response, is that we already had an updated process.
Would it have an impact on our housing element certification process?
I would venture that it certainly could. That's speculation on my part, but I think that would be problematic.
Because in our housing element application, we have ADUs as fortunately 1,250, however many.
A small portion, yes.
Right. So that would be a problem for us with the HCD and a problem for us with the certification process, correct?
That would be my guess, yes.
Okay.
Well, I think also, if we don't pass this, then we kind of lose control locally, right? And kind of what we can kind of guide the code.
In all fairness, what we can guide is that section is shrinking. But yes, there is, there is still some local control that's allocated to us.
Okay. Questions are used up?
I would just say that, you know, philosophically, it's a bummer, you know, for Old Town. But I would point out that, you know, we've spent the last 35 years downzoning Old Town. Old Town used to have triplexes and duplexes, and those have all been, most of them have been torn down and replaced by single-family homes. So, you know, it's like, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. And I don't think that we're in a position to, you know, not comply with state law at this point.
Okay. Well, I don't think we're in a position either to not comply, but I do appreciate hearing the updates to know exactly what the laws are allowing these days, so.
Yeah. And also, excellent questions, Lisa. Very good questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we've done, let's see. I guess we've done what we need to do. We'll take a vote, okay? Does anybody want to move?
Please, no, do we have to?
I was just going to ask for a motion.
Yep. Does anybody like to move this item? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I guess we'll have a roll call vote.
I'll take one last roll call vote. Councilmember Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Steele, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Landau, how do you vote?
No.